... July 13th as presented.
Thank you, and then the second by Councilor Martin Willis, all in favor, say five, I say aye.
Aye.
I am opposed, most carries, thank you very much. See anybody here for visitor comment? Okay, we're going to move on promptly. We have a presentation this evening on the Independence Communication Plan by J-Cor Communications and Consultants. Mr. Pestimer, were you doing any introductions, or?
Thank you, Mayor, just really briefly. So, as a reminder, we've been talking about communications for a long time in improving our communications, not only channels, but also just the material that we put out. And as we kind of walked through that process, I talked to you a number of times about, you know, looking originally just at hiring someone on to write content for us and do stuff. And then as we kind of got into it, looking at it more, it became obvious that we really needed some more support to figure out how we could communicate, what channels we should communicate, what adjustments we made. So, through that process, we ended up bringing out J-Cor. They are doing a number of things which they will talk about tonight, and I think they've interviewed a lot of you, and if they haven't, I'm sure they will make that happen. They also were able to provide a content writer, Mike McAnally, who has been writing some content and just until we get to the point where we can hire on someone on the staff to do that for us. So, I just wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to let you know where they're at. They're not done with their work yet, although it is starting to wrap up, and let you hear what they're at, what they are seeing, where they're going to go. And then, of course, if you have any questions for them, please feel free to ask.
Great. Well, welcome to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. It was a great opportunity. I think we proved ourselves to Tom, hopefully real quickly, in the fact that we have a lot of equity with the City of Independence. I spent fifteen years, twenty-five years at OSU Athletics, but then I moved over to Oregon State Credit Union and did fifteen years in business development, put a branch in, albeit Monmouth, but in Polk County. That's gone very well, and obviously, I've been up here to monitor. I think within two or three years, the Credit Union was the Business of the Year by the Chamber in the area, so we get very involved with the community, and I got to know it quite a bit through that. My wife, Judy, fourteen years as the PR Director at Western Oregon University, so she got to know the area as well. And I finally taught her cruise control on the way up from Cravalis, so I could marry her because I could afford the insurance premium. And Mike-
That wasn't tonight, was it?
No. No. We came to interview Sergeant Gilbert at 3:30 today, and as I screamed into town after a tractor was delaying us, wanting to be as much on time as I could be, I turned to her and I said, "It would be really ironic if I got a ticket in the City of Independence on the way to see Sergeant Gilbert." We went unscathed. But Mike, fifteen years as a newspaper man, and I know he interviewed the vast majority of you, I got with Marilyn and Councilor Tackett, too, so we were able to dabble a little with the council as well. So, we'll go into some of the research we've done to this point. It's been about four months of the six months that we're on contract for. We may go a little bit longer. We want to overlap with the PIO that may come on board, so we'll see where that goes and be open to the possibility of an extension. Again, you've got some great stories to tell here, and I can tell you confidently with my other business development outside of the area that Independence is the envy of a lot of other cities and towns, but that's not our target audience for this. This is communicating to your constituency, this is communicating internally to the voters and the public here in the City of Independence, and that's what we've been doing our research on. So, with that, Karen, if you'll go to the next slide, we'll be able to go into some of the discovery phase of our work to date. We've had monthly and bimonthly meetings with Tom and Sean and others as needed. We've had forty-plus stakeholder interviews to this point. All six councilors have been interviewed. We've gotten with the mayor. We ran into Paul Evans at The Brew, just by mistake, and he gave us an hour of his time. That was great. We've met with the city administration, we've met with department heads from finance, police, public works, economic development, again, key stakeholders in the business community, in the community in general. We've been in the schools, we've visited some of the schools already, we've visited the churches, and we have some representation. We probably want to get more, but we've had some representation of the Latino community so far, and we recognize that that's forty percent of your community, and thus, we hope to go a little bit deeper with that in the near future. Next slide. So, as we did the discovery phase of your communication channels right now, the current ones, the website is going to be paramount. That's probably not going to change in our final recommendations to you. And probably what I heard the most in the interviews of stakeholders yourselves is the website needs work. We need to improve that. That's some messaging, that's positioning of information, that's bringing that with some long-term and short-term recommendations. We hope to, but you have to recognize, a website is like an airport. It's always in progress. At no time will you ever say, "We're done. The website's completed." Okay? It's going to be a work in progress, and you need to stay timely and vital with that information. That is lagging right now to where some people may not visit it without us campaigning a little bit more to bring it back when we have some new energy and maybe take on some recommendations. But needless to say, the website is, needs to be the hub and where we direct all information requests in the future. We need to get it up to that standard. The newsletter, the newsletter currently goes into your utility bill. I know when I get my Northwest Natural, my Pacific Power, whatever, the other stuff goes. I want to know what I'm going to pay that month, and I move on. We probably are going to work on different ways, and we've already talked to Tom about the possibilities of other channels to get a newsletter out. You will see from Judy and Mike later on in the presentation that we've got some ideas for a new look, a new energy into the newsletter, and some features that need to be there. When you see the newsletter, whether you see it online, whether you see it as a separate mail drop to your populace, it needs to grab some attention in the first eight to ten seconds, or it's gone. And that covers side, that first page, needs to have the headlines of the day, the things the city wants the public to know. And we'll get there. The 2040 Vision is a very great opportunity for getting ahead and being proactive with where this city is going. The 2040 Vision needs to be held up constantly in the next couple decades, and I think the messaging with that 2040 Vision on the website and in other channels needs to be paramount in the future. The social media, you've done a nice job of social media to date, but we need to consolidate those efforts. I strongly recommend, I know the Police Department dabbled with Hootsuite, and a Hootsuite effort that would get into multiple channels in social media will be one of our recommendations. I'm fairly confident of. Other interactions, the current external interactions, we've heard through stakeholders that the council's done a nice job of leaving these chambers on occasion and going out to the school, other venues, and being well-received outside. We think those need to be expanded. They're very well-received, and the opportunity to go out into the community probably should be practiced even additionally in the future. Next slide, Karen. Just to know that we have, even though it's been some time since I was with the Credit Union and Judy with the clinic, we've done our tours and our visits. I see Marilyn laughing at the last line already. We've visited the riverfront, we've been downtown, we've visited the gardens, we've visited the parks and the ballfields, we did it by car and by bike, we've taken your bike paths, we biked out to the airpark, and while we haven't experienced any of them, we've read about your ghosts. And with that, the last stage of the discovery still to happen here is Judy's work with the research and the survey to happen here soon. She has compiled it, and we'll be handing an example of that out to you. It will be in English and in Spanish, and I'll get that off as Judy makes that part of the presentation.
Thank you for having us today. I'm shorter than the rest of them, hang on. There you go. Survey research. We've talked with many of you, one-on-one, and we've gotten your opinions. And obviously, the people in this room, you have more informed opinions than some of those who don't attend City Council regularly or get the minutes and all the rest. Survey is an extension of those interviews. It is an opportunity for us to go out and talk to your constituents and get to know a little more of what they have to say and what they think about the communications. What do they read? What do they remember? How accurate do they think it is? As well as what might be missing. So, we've designed a survey that's really more of a communications audit. It asks questions about the communication pieces, satisfaction, dissatisfaction, or levels of liking, and it also gives them an opportunity to say, "Hey, I'd like to read about this some more." Now, the implementation of that survey is what comes next, and Mike's going to pass around to you a copy of the printed survey so you can see what it looks like. We have two copies here, and if you could point them at either end, and you could take a look and pass them back and forth, you'll see that we have two types of questions. There are the communications types of questions, what do you like, what do you want more of, what do you want less of? Then there are what they call the demographic type of questions. These are the cross tabs. Do you live in, where do you live in the city? How old are you? What's your income? What's your gender? Things like that. Those are cross tabs, so that we will be able to look at the results of the survey and say, "Okay, women in the community may think this way, men think this way." You get my drift. Cross the tabs against what the comments are. Our goal will be to complete approximately 300 surveys. Now, in market research talk, that is a 95 percent confidence rating that if you did this survey a second time, you'd come up reasonably with the same types of results, plus or minus 0.5 percent. In addition, because we know that some people have Internet and some people don't, we have a wonderful email list that we will send an electronic survey to and invite people to participate. We also have printed surveys, both in English and Spanish, and the electronic will be in English and Spanish, that we will distribute. And our method of distribution will be to sit at your beautiful amphitheater at one of your concerts in the park, to come to the hop festival, to be at a community event, to go to the churches, and distribute the surveys. We have some Spanish-speaking people who will be helping us, as well as English-speaking like myself and a few others. We will distribute those with a goal of getting 300, at least 300, in return. But the key will be that the survey is representative of your population. So, right now, census says 40 percent Spanish-speaking, 60 percent English-speaking. So, our goal will be to get 40 percent Spanish-speaking return, 60 percent English-speaking return. All right. We're going to move to the next part. Go to the next slide.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you know that our Latino population doesn't speak English?
I don't, and that's one of the questions. They might.
So, you want a return of 40 percent from only Spanish-speaking people?
They will identify that in the cross tab, what their primary language is at home.
But you want the primary language of 40 percent of the people completing the survey to speak Spanish?
That is correct.
Is that truly representative of our community, that you believe that 40 percent of our community cannot speak English?
No. No, that's not the point.
So, if we have Latino people who speak English, they are not a part of the survey?
Oh, yes, of course they could be. They'll fill out probably an English-speaking survey, and-
Then it wouldn't count towards the 40 percent you're looking for?
It's a question in the cross tab. What language do you speak at home? It's not the type of survey that they fill out.
Okay, but if you're looking for those particular results, you probably will not get them if you're insisting on people actually speaking Spanish to fill them out?
No, that's not, that's not the way the question is worded. The way the question is worded is, what language do you speak at home as your primary language? They might fill out an English-speaking survey.
Okay.
They will have that choice.
Okay.
Okay? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I can just jump in. I'm not sure if this is on. We will actually have, we should have in mid-August, new census results that will tell us exactly what percentage of primary speaking, whether they speak Spanish or English in Independence. The census data from everything we hear is just about here. So, we'll match up those numbers, whether it's 40 percent, or 30 percent, or 20 percent, or whatever that is, based on what we see in the census. Does that come?
And the census will tell us how many-
Yes.
-of our Latinx population speaks only Spanish?
Primary, what they primarily speak.
What their primary language is. It's worded, it's worded as primary language.
You could actually have two people from a household respond to the survey, and one in English and one in Spanish.
That's correct. And I've visited households like that.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to the next slide, and Mike McAnally is going to talk about content.
Well, first, councilors, Mr. Mayor, city officials, thanks very much for your time tonight. Even in the midst of the communication work that we're doing now, one of our goals has been to immediately create stories highlighting some of the good work that's going on in the city. So, we've been creating stories for the River City's Brief Newsletter since its May edition on a variety of topics, as you can see here. Now, these stories for River City Briefs have been short, designed to fit in a space of about 250 or 300 words or so, and that's been a challenge sometimes. So, in some cases, I've also been working on longer visions of those stories that go into more depth. A good example would be the May story about how 25 years of community planning and work led to that Independence Landing Project and the apartments that opened up earlier this year. We're still looking to find the right places on the city's website for these longer in-depth stories, but we'll have a few more words about the city's website, some of which you already have shared with us in just a few moments. One of the goals at the end of our work is to be able to hand off a long list of story ideas with sources for the person who's hired the city's Public Information Officer. And we think that's important for reasons that we'll go into on the next slide. Karen? The reason, the state of the media landscape these days, and it hurts me as a longtime newspaper person to have to say this, the state of the media landscape these days forces you as a city to become your own publisher. You can't count on media coverage the way you used to be able to even a couple of decades ago. So, that raises two challenges. First, what is the content that you want to deliver consistently? And second, what are the most effective channels to disseminate that content? Where do your constituents want to read the information that you want to provide about what's going on in the city? Now, to that end, let me bring Judy back to the podium to talk briefly about what we've identified as one of your key communications tools, the city's website. Judy?
Most people don't go to the website because they want to enjoy their evening reading. Back to Mike's airport analogy, it's very real when it comes to websites. And Jason, I want to tell you, I've been in your shoes where you have so many pieces that have to come together into that website. It's a big picture. It's your hub. It needs to include the latest news, and it also needs to include the vital details. Karen, could you move the slide to the website page? Thank you very much. The website is your hub, and people don't go there for their evening reading. Now, we've had the conversation with Jason and others about what, how you use your website and the things that need to go into it. The key is that everything comes to the website in some way or form. It becomes your source. Your social media drives to the website. Your newsletter drives to the website. Your details and communications drive to the website. Nowhere on your website right now do you have that big, beautiful story that's on the front page of your newsletter. It's in the form of a PDF that someone has to search for. It becomes efficient, and I mentioned the word "search," "search engine optimization," and I'm betting everybody in this room has heard those, that SEO letter, words. It means that people going on to a browser are searching words and finding what they need to know or finding what they want to search on your website. And so, you need to make your keywords and make your words and content on your website work for that SEO. You have a lot of outbound links on your website. What that means is, if I want to look at the, what's at the movie house, or what's happening at The Brew, or what is going on in the Police Department, I can click on something and I can go out to their area. Can I get back? Or do my customers get lost? Do my citizenry get lost? It happens all the time, and so we want to do the best we can to play both games, outbound links, getting out there to get the information, but don't let my citizens get lost. It happens. Websites require collaboration. Many people think they are part of the IT department. There are others who think that the website is part of the graphic design department. And then there are those who think it's part of the content department or the photographer's or videographer's department. The fact of the matter is, is that a website is a collaboration. It takes everyone, and it takes everyone to pull it together and have their role. So, potentially, we will be trying to provide you with a few hero points that you can use more currently to improve the website, make your search better than it is, improve the navigation, improve your links. However, you have, you will have to also evaluate, at what point do we need to do another total revision of the website? And that's a long-term goal. Right now, you use a munich code with a Drupal CMS. That sounded really technical. What that means is that how easy is it for me to update and get what I need on that website without being a coder? So, more to come on your website. Think of it as your hub of all your communications, that you're driving everything to. I'm going to bring Mike back up now to talk about-
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sure, sure.
It was going back to your survey. I noticed for the ages, it started at 18. Is that what you're going to be doing the survey for adults? Because in the past, they did probably about half of the information they got back came from Talmage Middle School, Central High School, and then some of the college. So, I was concerned about that previously, and so I'm curious about your survey, if that's going to be geared more towards adults.
Well, we looked at the Census Bureau survey categories and tried to pattern after them, but you raise a good point, and I've gone back and forth with narrowing the, narrowing the age limits and not putting quite as emphasis on younger versus older. But I think that's a point we should look at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would agree with that and suggest that perhaps accessing the senior class at Central High School would be a good start, as well as one of the classes at Western or some different fields of study at Western, because the senior class, junior and senior class is one group for which we do City Council in their presence. The other thing is, don't overlook the Hispanic Community Fiesta that's coming up at the end of this month.
They are on our list. I just didn't mention them all. Thank you, Marilyn. I will tell you, I've been to Central High School, I've also been to the elementary school. Mona Heinz was there doing an enrichment program, and we do have the principal of Central High School on our interview list for August 5th, so just more to gather. But thank you for that information. So, I'm going to bring Mike back up now to talk about the newsletter, and if we could move to the next slide.
So, let's talk briefly about River City Briefs, your newsletter. First, though, as a former newspaper editor, and maybe more to the point, a former editor of a church newsletter, I really do need to give appreciation to Karen Johnson. What she does on a monthly basis to pull River City Briefs together is just exactly like herding cats, that is, if cats knew enough to fear deadlines. So, Karen, thanks very much for your work on River City Briefs, month in and month out. We do think that there are opportunities with River City Briefs. We think, first, it's overdue for a revamped design. We have some prototypes that we're going to hand out, and I want to emphasize right now, before you see the prototypes, nothing is set in stone. We still have weeks of work and moving together on finding a redesigned format that we like, that we like. We're also looking hard, in terms of communications, at producing an emailed version of River City Briefs with shortened versions of each item and links back to the website where the fuller versions of these stories would live. Next slide, please, Karen. Now, we've talked, and you can see there, a couple of the prototypes, we've been working with a designer to develop, and again, there's a lot of work to be done on those, but, and we want to maybe facilitate a change. It's produced now in Microsoft Publisher. We want to facilitate a change to make it as easy as possible to move over to InDesign, which gives us more layout and design options. And we've talked a little bit, of course, about the newsletter and the website being your primary sources for disseminating information, but they have to work in concert with a variety of secondary channels, including, but not limited to, social media. So, I want to bring Judy back to the podium, and I want to thank you very much for your time tonight.
Karen, could you go to the next slide? So, I drew the short straw, and I got social media. So, you have lots of social media that represent the City of Independence. In fact, I think I counted 10 different Facebook groups that were groups, not individuals, just groups of people. And so, my great big question in the back of my mind of these 10 groups and the YouTube channel, how are they all collaborating and sharing so that the message is consistent? And how does it get back to your website? How can we help with that? That's all I want to say about social media. Outreach. We have heard from citizenry that when you are out in the community, when you are present, when your leadership is present, it is noticed. And the more you can do that in town halls and forums and in front of your community at your events, the more they will connect with you and build relationships with you. So, in terms of personal outreach, forums, town halls, think about how you can be present. Next slide, please. So, I want to summarize the value of all of your media, of your communication. Repetition. Repetition of the same message consistently. It all leads back to the website, and it may also help the newsletter to increase its readership and applicability. That's all I want to say. Thank you. Next slide.
Okay, I'll wrap up very quickly here, just the future work we have. Obviously, the survey, we'll get the survey out at the events, online, in different venues. The handoff tentatively is scheduled for October 1. We've- We've given Tom some information that we would recommend be part of the post for a public information officer, FTE. We hope to get that out. And however the hiring process, whatever that takes, we, again, hope to overlap by at least 30 days, to be able to hand things off in a smooth transition to that person to where they would be very comfortable in taking what we've established for them in the way of processes. And that includes the traffic flow. Right now, you have people like Ms. Camaro in Public Works, you've got Lyle Gilbert in the police department. They're kind of assigned as the PIOs, and they've developed some great talents in working with Karen toward the newsletter and other channels. A public information officer is going to be the base for things. That person should be an initiator, an extrovert, somebody that has the skills internally, but also can get the word out. And everybody can confidently come to that person to get the information out, working under Tom. Again, we want to establish a blueprint for a very successful future for you with communications. We want to do that and hand that off to a public information officer that can go off and hit the ground running. So with that, last slide is just our contact information, and we are open for any and all further questions.
Questions for the presenter today. Counselor Core.
Maybe my expectations were set too high, but I'm not hearing anything that I haven't heard, that I didn't know, that I haven't articulated in multiple forums. Actually, I really don't even know where to start. Nobody under the age of 40 is going to read our website. Period, end of story. They're going to get their news on social media. And quite frankly, that's the audience I'm most concerned about. People over the age of 40 are probably going to walk in the door if they've got an issue and address it. Nobody under the age of 40 is going to do that. I have Monmouth Power and Light as my utility company, and I get their, the Monmouth City Newsletter via email. Comes right to my email box. I have to do anything to set it up. Chock full of information, great product. For a while, Karen, we were doing that. We were, we were sending out stuff via email. And I think that's the way to go. I don't know how many people get a physical water bill anymore. I haven't gotten a water bill in ages. I don't even get anything. I just get a notice saying, "I took your money." Which is fine. That's all I care about. I paid my bill. But when you come back, whenever we do maybe an interim presentation, I mean, I don't see anything positive here, from my perspective.
The, the social media, again, complementary means it could be the starting point. It could be that first point of contact. What we want to still do, and we've done successfully with a lot of other channels, with cities, with municipalities, with nonprofits, we have taken Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, all the channels, and we've started there, but we link back to a website to where you get additional information. The teasers are right there. Obviously, Facebook is only read in short blurbs. Twitter, even shorter. We want to drive people to a website, to a newsletter. Those still need to be the hub channels for information, for extensive information. And we can get people there. We've done it successfully in other instances.
I'm sorry to be pessimistic about this-
Oh, no, that's fine.
But to Mike's point, nobody reads the newspaper anymore. You know, they want the blurb. They want the shorter-
Exactly.
You know, the tidbits. The kind of people that I think you need to be talking to, like we talked about earlier, are younger people, because we hope they're going to be the future of this city, so we want to know how to reach them. We don't just want to inform people, we want to engage people. We want people to come to meetings, we want people to come to forums and participate. And we can't, we're not getting there. You know, we're seeing the same people at everything.
Sure. No, and as are most cities and towns. I mean, that's been the nature of it. And I applaud you for this effort of trying to spur that next generation, and others. You know, right now, you probably have, any town has 25% of its populace could care less. Just, "I want to pay my bills. I don't want to deal with the city. I want to move on and just live my life." There's another smaller version that are the ones that you see constantly. They're the, they might hit double figures, they may not. Maybe a single-digit percentage that will interact with you on a regular basis. We are going after that 70-plus percent that are the people that we can target and try to engage them to be more involved citizens here in Independence.
And I think, I think that 25%, we've got to leave the door open, obviously, for them, but we, but we know they're not going to come. I'm going to put Jason on the spot, because Jason, you're under 40, right?
Uh, 40.
Jason and his wife have a small kid, you know, and I asked Jason a while back, I'm like, "How do we reach you? How do, you know, if you weren't a city employee, how would we reach you?" He's so freaking busy between his job, his wife's job, his child. I mean, we've got to figure out a way to crack that nut. We have got to figure out a way to make it easy for them to engage in this process.
Every, I mean, it goes back to what I described as to the points of the newsletter. That newsletter, again, has the shelf life of direct mail piece. And if that business sends you a direct mail piece, you have eight to 10 seconds, maybe. If it looks appealing, okay, I'll maybe read a sentence or two. You know, that's the same approach we need to take in newsletter, in social media, in all the messaging that we're going to do. We need to get them in short little blurbs, and if it ignites them, or there's any ounce of interest there, that's what we need to capitalize on and link them to further information.
I want to make sure that, that there is not something that's assumed here. Our goal is not to keep the newsletter in the utility bill. I think that's Tom's goal, that's our goal, that's our charge. So if we didn't say that, I apologize, but I hope that's not your assumption. We're going for something different.
Because I was, I guess I'm a little confused. I do and have, for a very long time, receive my city newsletter separately from my bill. It's its own little email, Independence Newsletter. And I click that, and I read River City Briefs every month.
I've never seen that.
It may be how you set up your payment, though, too. I set my payment up automatically, so I don't-
Obviously, there's some things that we're going to follow up and, and I don't want to-
Maybe I checked the box along the way. I don't know.
I have a couple of questions, too. And I agree with Counselor Core wholeheartedly about this, because Mrs. Corwin came up and said that people don't go for, to our website for evening reading, yet the whole answer to all your problems is to put something in for more people to read. I'm not really sure how that's going to drive people to that, to read that. I'm not sure that you're doing this. I still don't know how this survey is going to get more people looking for the information that we're trying to provide. And that is the same thing I believe Ms., or Counselor Core was saying. And finally, is what type of information do you feel, since you're doing this research, needs to be delivered repeatedly? I mean, outside of emergencies, what do we need to hammer into people's heads? What do you guys feel that we're missing in our communication? I feel we're missing on our website, direct emails to every person. Every email from all the councils should be super easy to find. The police department should be super easy to find. Everything that has been presented here are things we already know are wrong, but I haven't heard any solutions on how we're going to fix it. But I would love to know, outside of emergencies, what does your research show us on what we need to state repeatedly? What information do we need to hit out repeatedly?
What I'm hearing from, and again, talking to the different department heads, talking to Giselle Camaro, talking to Lyle Gilbert about what they've experienced, a lot of the things are, some of them are very just light topics, safety. The Latino community wants more education as to, you know, how do they stay out of the way of law enforcement? How do they stay safe and integral part of the community? Things like that. Again, we're building our early impressions. The survey, we hope, will further punctuate what we've come to know through the interviews we've had, the 40-plus so far. We're not going to stop there. We still have several people that we haven't been able to communicate with. But I think we've got a pretty good idea. And again, we're giving you early impressions, and we just wanted to update you where we're at. You'll have many more hard and fast recommendations, I assure you.
But your biggest right now is, is how to protect people in this community from our police department?
No, 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 no. That was one of the comments made from the Latino community about just education, just-
How much did we pay for this research?
Speak me up? Okay, there we go. I don't have the exact contract amount in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Thank you.
And I think the focus needs to be on engagement, not necessarily informing, or information. We need to get the community engaged in what's going on in this city. Because that's how we get the input. That's how we understand what they want and what they need. And so that's very important to me as well.
I'd like to weigh in here for a minute. I'm going to look at it from a little different perspective, which is from having a business downtown. And how many times you have people come in and say, "Gosh, I didn't know you were here." And yet, the business has been there for five, 10, 15, 20 years. And the issue there is awareness. Awareness of what's going on. Awareness of how to find information. Awareness of events that are happening. Awareness of prices, and, and schedules, and locations. And you can say something to someone 100 times and walk away from them, or they can tell you, and you'll walk away from, and the first thing you'll think was, "Now, where was that?" Because it's not something that tracks with everybody's way of retaining information. And you have to say it over and over and over again. And it is not a comment about the intelligence or lack thereof of the, of the consuming community. There is just so much to consume that you have to give the high points over and over again in order to raise it on personal algorithms about how people remember and what they remember. And I will, I will say again, I think that the points that have been made here about going to the younger population are very important. I have a son 31 years old, and he's been a great resource up till about two years ago. And now he's busy with all kinds of other things. And if I say, "I have, I need your help with the computer," his first answer now is, "Oh, not, oh, sure, Mom, I'll take care of it." It's, "I don't have time."
Sure.
And then we go on.
But why, why does the city of Independence need to promote private business information?
I'm not talking about promoting private business. I'm talking about promoting city information. Because we have to do a job of advertising and information, just like the private business would.
Right. But my thing is, is we don't have to put information about what the brew is doing and have a link back to the city from the brew website.
That's their job.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's not our, our issue here. So I'm not sure how having links to and from private businesses is going to-
Well, and I'm not saying about, I was using that as an analogy.
No, yeah, and I'm saying, back to what we were saying earlier.
Back to Mr. Corwin.
So again, repetition of city messages, what do you want to get out? What, what do you need to get in front of? Because I think the impression we got out there is, while, again, city of Independence is the envy of many city and town outside of here, the populace sometimes thinks that too few people are making all the decisions. And what we want to get out there is, give them the power, give them the information to where they are engaged and can take the steps to get more involved and be that citizenry that you want. You know, we've heard that from Sean, too. Sean is very proud of what his economic development department has accomplished, but it's one of those to where he wants people that, you know, he's not the lone, he's not the Pied Piper. He's the one that is just part of the charge to do the things that, again, the city of Independence, the citizenry want. And that's the word that we want to get out there is, again, I think the Vision 2040 is a great future piece, and needs to be held up, or tweaked as you amend as you go, to make sure that indeed you've got a future piece that is a direction for the future of communications and the operations.
And one of our proudest accomplishments out of Vision 2020 was how many of the things that got done. And there were still plenty of people in town that did not know that that was part of a plan.
Sure.
And it's important to, to pat your own, your city on the back for all of its accomplishments.
So I'm going to get-
Can I weigh in?
Sure.
Okay. I really liked what you just said. That is the biggest problem in our city, is that people don't know what's happening, where the money's being spent. I didn't know. I wasn't paying attention. I was one of those people, I think many, like the 70% you're talking about, we care, but didn't really know what was going on. So that is my goal, is to really reach out to people. We work for them. You know, we are serving this community. It's not our agenda. It's not what we want. And I, my experience is, for far too long, it has been a very small group of people that do make the decisions and move forward, and nobody bats an eye, and nobody questions it, because we're just doing it. And so I'm glad that that's what you're looking at, is getting feedback from the actual community that we serve.
I agree with everything everybody said. And to Marilyn's point, it's very important to get information out there. I understand what she's talking about. You, you talk about Independence Days, but you have to say it again, and again, and again, and ask for volunteers again, and again, and again, every time you do that. One of the things that I think we fail miserably on with our website is city council. We make it very hard for people to get engaged in city council. We make it very hard for people to find the minutes, find the agendas. You have to opt in to everything. I'm a city councillor. I can't find minutes from a previous meeting sometimes. I can't keyword search on minutes. That's crazy.
Yes, it is.
It's nuts. But if you look at, for instance, city of Milwaukee, Milwaukee, Oregon, not, not, what state is Milwaukee in? Wisconsin?
Wisconsin.
Milwaukee, Oregon.
The big Milwaukee.
Milwaukee, Oregon. They have a great website for their city council. It's very engaging. It puts information, like a bio, so people know what we do for a living, what our experience is, what we bring to the table, you know? But it also gives them the opportunity to search on things. They can see what we've passed. They can see what, what issues got, you know, kind of stonewalled. And then go back and they do the research. We don't give anybody the tools to do that.
And again, those need to be in those small morsels that, you know, you need to be able to snack on your information. Because that's the forum that you're going to get it. And that's why I appreciate your comment about social media. I really do. Because that's the forum they need to put into the newsletter, that's the forum you need to put in the website. Before you scroll, when you hit the homepage of the website, you should have access to the city newsletter. You should have access to what do you want them to know? Same approach to the front page of the newsletter each week, or each month, should be, pretty much, the homepage plays along. And it resonates, and it's more repetition, and it's that message. You know, I'd like to think there's only a handful of things every month that you need to, you want to get in front of them. And you want them to know, and actually come prepared to be part of this bleacher section.
Right now, the community gets their information from a Facebook chat group, and-
Depending on which chat group you're in.
And those are, those are moving targets, too. Nextdoor lasted about this long.
But we don't, we don't want people, you know, populating bad information, and, and that becomes gospel. And we can't have that. It's going to happen regardless. We can't stop it. But nevertheless, we have to be able to point people to, "Here's the accurate information. Here's really what's going on."
Right.
Kind of stuff.
And do it in a repetitive fashion. Yeah.
So I think you've gotten some input.
I would be disappointed if you didn't come at us with challenges. And you have, and we appreciate that.
Well, I'm sure we'll hear from you folks again in the not-too-distant future.
I have one more thing before you go. Next time you come, could you bring data on how having the River City Briefs mailed separately would get more attention than have it being in our water bill?
Sure.
The costs associated with mailing a separate flyer instead of just keeping it in?
And we've started to break that down as well. We've worked on that with Tom already.
Thank you.
Yes, discussed that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to continue moving forward. We have some reports here, and I have a couple of things just to keep you informed about. First of all, I wanted to let you know that, as you know, the, we did a little bit of a shout-out to Team USA- a shout out to Team USA, the Olympic and Paralympic team. And that, that was a wonderful thing that we did. A thousand people helped do that. I got a very nice email from the Olympic staff in Tokyo, said they loved what they saw. They shared it with team members in the, in the living areas and in the training camps. And so that was lots of fun for everybody. It turned around really quickly, so thank you so much. Other things just coming up in the next couple of days, I'm going to be making several presentations at the Oregon Mayors Association. And then coming up after that, I've been invited to speak to the Oregon Community Foundation Board of Directors. They're having their very first in-person meeting in about a year and a half. And they're going to do it here in Independence. And so I get a chance to share a little bit with them. That's all I have of that. I'm going to go immediately to Council Roden. You have traffic safety report and we'll follow along with the council liaison reports. Council Roden?
Our traffic safety meeting was led by Fred and he did a great job in our last meeting. And we just had a good follow-up and in more depth communication about transportation issues around IES, Independence Elementary School. And how we had some members of Portland State University, I believe, that are coming down to survey our area for eased and biking and pedestrian traffic and how we can better have access to crossing the streets at 4th, 5th, and potentially down a few more blocks, too, for students to cross the roads. We came to a conclusion that we really need to find out how the schools are going to respond to COVID in the fall to determine how much we really need to change some things. Because bus use may increase. We may be able to fix some issues with just a lot of drop-offs and go back to what we have done in the past with more than just two buses working the entire elementary school. So lots of good conversation and things that we really are going to be focused at once we get more information on the schools.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Jobe, Historic Preservation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's continued, there was a continued hearing on alterations of the structure at 555 Monmouth Street. Heard from staff and they did move forward with approving the recommendation and conditions presented in the staff report and added a condition that the front door replacement will be approved at a later date. There was also the hearing regarding demolition of structure at 261 Monmouth Street. The commission approved the demolition request for that property. The applicant is saving as much as possible for the other restoration projects. And he's also restoring the house next door. And staff reported that an application has been received for 203 Monmouth Street, discussion of code requirements for review. The applicant was present and answered questions from commissioners. Staff will bring more details to the next meeting. And staff sent out information about the opportunity for homeowners to apply for grants for restoration projects. And they are still working on the artist, working with the artist on the Historic Preservation Award.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Lots of meat in that one. Council Cor, you want to talk about the Independence Days Commission, please?
We had our wrap-up meeting on July 14th and we discussed process of procedures and identified issues and how we could operate better or make improvements in the coming year. We're all, of course, hopeful that it'll be Independence Days like we know and love and we won't have to do any kind of crazy last-minute planning. Volunteers were a huge issue this year, more so than last year, more so than the year before. I know volunteerism is a huge issue for the city. I know Sean's trying to do something about that. But we have just got to start beating the bushes and get some dedicated volunteers that we can count on without having to keep them on a fishing line for months leading up to an event. It's hard to sustain the excitement, believe me. It looks like the Rotary's already applied to do the parade, so it looks like we're off to business as usual, so that's good. We do have some urgent vacancies to fill on the commission, Finance Commissioner and Family Activities Commissioner. I'd appreciate if everybody would talk to their friends and neighbors. And if anybody's interested, please apply right now. The chair is doing all the finance work and she has a full-time job and works a lot of overtime. And so we need to try to help alleviate some of that stress on her. But other than that, I'm glad it's over.
Excuse me, Shannon, what was the, what were the two positions they were particularly needing?
Finance Commissioner and Family Activities.
And I have a question, too. If any other group wants to apply to do the parade, what is the process for that and what is the timing?
I don't know. I'll find out. I'm letting you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, I think it's to you.
So, thank you, Mayor and Councilors. I don't have a ton of information tonight, but there are just a few things I want to cover and then, of course, happy to answer any questions you may have. Just briefly, you probably have all heard that we have some hot weather returning Thursday through Saturday of this week. I haven't heard from the county on any cooling shelters or other information, but as that comes out, we'll certainly let people know. But we definitely have heard it's going to be getting hot, not as hot as it was back in June, but certainly hot enough to probably be uncomfortable and to potentially, to cause some concerns for some people who might be affected by the heat more than others. So I just want to keep in front of everyone, even though it's behind me, the Main Street project, you probably saw some signs go up. I noticed we actually got a sign up on the other side of the bridge here as well. That's going to be a project that is going to cause a fair amount of delays in traffic. Unfortunately, there really isn't a good way around that. Otherwise, we would create detours. So you'll see them trying to work in different zones. I looked at the traffic control plan today. And they're going to try to keep the zones where they're doing work and constricting it down to one lane as small as possible so that you're not having to go a long ways and create long queues. But certainly there are going to be interruptions to the traffic flow out here as they put in the water line and then follow that up with doing the paving project. We will do that paving at night, so that will be some benefit for that week when they're doing that. But it definitely, it's not a project that we can detour around. And so it will definitely be noticed by many people. So I just want to keep that out there.
Can I, can I ask something? So I have, I, that's something I haven't seen on social media. Seems like that's a place where we want to be trying to push that information out.
Yeah, it is. And we have not put it out on social media yet, but we will. We're still waiting a little bit for the contractor and the timing on that.
Okay.
Project's starting on the 26th, but there probably won't be any significant delays until sometime in August, so.
Okay. Bye.
Just real quickly on the museum, just happy to let you know that the move is 90% complete. There's just a couple of items to move over to the new museum. Glad to have that happen. We're going to close on the old museum on August 3rd, so just getting that finally finished. Last item that we had to do was get some bees out of one of the walls in the entry area there. So that was something I've been working with Public Works on here over the last week, trying to get that opened up so we could get a bee specialist in there. He, he got most of them out today, but he didn't quite get the queen. So he's going to have to pull some more of the honeycomb out because what we're doing is not only just getting the bees out of there so he can relocate them to a new hive, but also getting all their comb back out of there so they don't come back. That's where the problem is. They've gotten rid of the bees before, but they actually never dug into the wall to actually get the honeycomb out. So the next year, there's this swarm of bees and they go like, hey, they're perfect, perfect home for me.
Congo.
So they land in the museum yet again and we have this recurring problem. So hopefully that will help. I think you're probably all curious about Museum Manager. We did get three qualified applicants for that and we're starting the interview process here shortly and hope to get that finished up soon. Sidewalks, I have a feeling that I'm going to get a question on sidewalks, so I'm just going to be proactive and talk about that really quick, just to make sure that there's some information out there. So sidewalks, they tend to, you know, have problems over time. And there are certain areas where we have heaving sidewalks or cracking sidewalks or the point where they deteriorate to where something needs to be done. A lot of times, we are complaint-driven on that. And we did get some complaints in like two different areas of town. We followed our typical process on that is we get a complaint, we send Public Works out to take a look and to see if there are issues. If they see issues, then they'll paint the issues where the fixes need to be made. They typically also just don't look at one particular home. They'll typically go up and down the block to see if there are other things. Because what we found in street trees in particular is if you're starting to have area problems in one area, you're likely to have problems up and down the street. So recently, we sent out 22 letters to two different areas. One was in the downtown area, the other was out further, to residents that they needed to work on their sidewalks and move forward. So what happens is we send out the letter. Right now, it gives them 30 days to fix that. Obviously, we're going to work with people. Right now, getting contractors really hard. There are other issues out there. So we typically waive the permit fee. Sometimes Public Works will actually haul the concrete off if the homeowner wants to work with them. So we try to do what we can. But ultimately, you know, the sidewalk needs to get fixed at some point. And so we have a program to do that. We're following our standard process, which is basically receive a complaint, identify, send a letter, work with them to make sure that it gets accomplished.
I have a question on that.
In time. Yes.
Sidewalks, trees. A lot of the time, the city requires those trees to be there. Is that correct?
Well, street trees are sometimes required, especially in new subdivisions, yes.
So the city requires the tree to be there, but then when they cause the damage, the homeowner has to pay for it?
That's the way it is in almost every city in Oregon, yes.
Is that something we can change?
I wouldn't recommend changing it unless we have a way to pay for it. A lot of cities have a street fee, utility fee, Independence doesn't. Or they have a gas tax, which the City of Independence doesn't. So, I mean, there are cities that do or pay for a portion of either tree replacement or sidewalk repair, but they also have a fee or some sort of funding mechanism in order to do that. So certainly, if that would be something we wanted to consider. But one thing I've heard is we want to keep fees at a minimum here, so that would be something we would have to have a conversation about.
Maybe that we can have people plant bushes or something instead? Like I just, it just seems silly that the require, they are required to plant and then once it destroys a sidewalk, they are required to fix it. I don't know, it just kind of baffles me.
And sidewalks deteriorate for a number of reasons. Trees are one. And certainly, I think a lot of good work has been done over the last 20 years in particular to find trees that actually send the roots down so you don't have those reoccurring-type problems. Because sometimes when people just plant any tree, they tend to send their roots out very close to the surface and they get bigger and then the sidewalk panels pop.
Like tulip trees in front of your house.
All right, I see lots of hands and questions here, so I saw yours. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, I was just wondering why, why the 30 days? Because the people who've contacted me, they said they researched price to fix their sidewalks and with inflation right now, like out of control, they told me that their bid to replace the sidewalk in front of their house is $15,000. And they have 30 days to do it and they live paycheck to paycheck. And while I, I wish all of our sidewalks were perfect, how can we ease people, like how do we ease the anxiety that some people are feeling about having a 30-day window to fix that?
Well, as I mentioned, we're going to work with people and as we always do. That's, 30 days is kind of our standard. We're following our standard process. But it is a unique time and we certainly understand that. So it's not like in 30 days, we're going to be going out writing citations and doing stuff. We'll definitely work with people and make sure that they have the time that they need. Obviously, we can't let it go forever either. But, you know, we certainly need to create a necessity to do it, but we also are very understanding as we always do.
Council Cor.
I understand the deadline. I mean, if you don't put a deadline, people are just going to ignore it. So you got to put something. Two questions. One question. I used to live on 4th Street and whoever had the house, oh, I know who had the house before me, former mayor, Puff.
Senator Puff.
Yeah. Lot of patching on that sidewalk. How professional does the repair have to be?
Well, we do waive the fee for the Public Works permit and, but we do require them to pull a right-of-way permit, sorry, it's Public Works right-of-way permit. So we do waive the fee typically on sidewalk repairs. So we typically will go out and inspect it. I can't tell you what's happened over time there because you're probably right, some things happened. But we do have standards.
Lot of quick crepe. Lot of quick crepe.
We have, we do have standards and, you know, a lot of times what happens is you'll see people do repairs to a point where you just can't do that anymore and then you really have to pull up significantly.
Now, this may have been a little bit before your time with the city, but Monmouth had the same issue a couple of years ago. And I don't know if they came to a resolution. I know they, I know one of the council, who is no longer on the council, suggested a sidewalk fund. I don't know if that ever happened. I don't know if it's feasible, but I'd like to hear what Monmouth has figured out on this problem.
Sure. Yeah, I'll be happy to check with them. And quite, you know, like I mentioned, you know, there are a lot of cities that have put in a street fee for this purpose. And, you know, that is something that we could consider, but that has its own set of issues. Although I, just to be open, we've been talking about needing to do a street improvement program for a long time. So we're probably going to have that conversation at some point anyway in the near future after we get the transportation system plan adopted. The next step is going into the system development methodology as well as, you know, if there are any fees that we need to do. So that conversation will be coming up. And if you guys have any interest in including sidewalks and trees and with that, that is something that certain cities do, but it does come at a cost.
Council Martin Willis.
So I'm going to zip back to trees real quick. When we require trees, do we require tree rings?
I don't believe that we do. But some cities do. There's varying theories on that. But in new subdivisions, that's something that some cities have added. That would be something we could consider, so.
And even if it's just, if you're going to put in a, say, tulip tree. I've replaced my sidewalk, thank you, so I have some sympathy here. Even if those are rings for certain species, yeah, that's the word, species of trees whose roots do tend to go out rather than down, that might be a consideration.
Okay. And I'll just, I've had the joy also of replacing sidewalks and...
Yes, again, you're on a corner lot. That's a double option.
Thank you, but, no, and it wasn't trees, it was just the ground.
Yeah.
You know, or, or trees 100 years ago that finally, oh, well. So anyway, did you have anything else that you wanted to talk about?
No, just a reminder that I'm going to be out starting the 3rd of August through the 16th. So if you need to talk to me before then, great. Obviously, I'll take your phone call when I can. But I'm going to try to unplug as much as I can and focus on my family as well as give someone else the opportunity to have all the fun that I get to normally have.
Just go somewhere that doesn't have cell service and you don't have a choice.
Tom, regarding the cooling shelters, is the library open full-time now?
It's not. We still have limited hours. I mean, even way before COVID, you know, the library had pretty limited hours. I think we're close to, back to what they were pre-COVID. But, you know, we've had, like every other library, financial challenges that have caused us to cut back on the hours that it's open, so.
The county website is referring folks to their local city for cooling shelter.
Hopefully, they don't go to our website.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I'm going to keep us moving forward. Ms. Butch, I think you have some brief comments related to financial reports.
I just, we'll just, you know, hit on some of the highlights in my report in the summary section. I just wanted to point out the notable exceptions to revenues below what our estimates were, were license-ef or COVID-related.
Okay. So to put this in a broader perspective, in your opinion, is there not overinflated income or overinflated expense because of COVID? Is it fairly true picture?
It is a fairly true picture. I would say that where we really fall short is in the water fund. And that's in fines, fees for non-payment for shut-offs and all of that because all of that was suspended. We probably fell short, probably right around $35,000 in that fund.
Okay.
In that type line item. There is a mechanism coming up in the next round of the American Rescue... There is a mechanism coming up in the next round of the American Rescue that you can do a calculations of lost revenues. It's very detailed, and we haven't really explored whether we want to even go down that route yet.
Would that appeal or apply to the 21, 22 budget, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Gloria, if I can jump in here, because I think this might help answer the question. So all the revenues and expenditures, especially from CARES, we tried to put in the grant fund as much as possible, because what we were trying to do is make sure that we were taking those monies and putting them in a fund where they could be seen, rather than in all of the different general fund categories. So I, I think that was kind of the question you were asking.
Yes, it was.
We, we really, we worked hard to make sure that we were trying to, to pull that out, mostly for transparency, especially as we could move forward with the American Rescue Plan monies. It'll all be in that fund, and rather than coming into general fund categories all over the place, you can kind of see it over there, because it's in one fund.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to, we're going to, I'm going to open a public hearing on Transportation System Plan File Number LA 2021. Mr. Evander, I think you get to speak to us. And excuse me, oh, excuse me, I have a script here that I'm supposed to read. Hold on, before we get going. All right, this is the state's required spend. This evening, we'll have a public hearing on legislative amendment LA 202103 to consider adoption of the Transportation System Plan and amending the Independence Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. The City Council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings are being recorded. This hearing will be held in occurrence with land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type IV legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing tonight, staff will identify the applicable substantial criteria for the city's comprehensive plan and/or state of Oregon statewide planning goals. For anyone wishing to speak, we're asking you to use the speaker cards that provided when called to speak must be recognized and state your name and address for the record. Before we begin, does any councilor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? I don't see anybody jumping up and down. Okay, I know, open a public hearing for LA 202103. Now we can have the staff report.
Perfect, thank you very much. It's nice to be here today. Fred Evander, city planner here at the City of Independence. What we're here to present tonight is the Independence Transportation System Plan. We have been before you before, sort of describing some of the details of this plan. This plan was precipitated because recently, the city's been growing pretty fast, and we have regional traffic that uses our transportation system, and our transportation investments have not kept pace. This plan was funded through the state of Oregon, through the, through a TGM grant. We, we worked with Kittleson and Associates on this update. Matt Bell will present in just a little bit, just some of the high-level stuff of the plan. So, so based on all of that stuff, we looked at existing traffic conditions, we looked at safety, safety data, we've looked, we looked at where collisions were happening, we looked at where volumes were getting congested. And then, we also took things like a bunch of additional growth, particularly in the southwest area, but also throughout the rest of the city, and looked, and said, what does that do to our transportation system in the next 20 years? Based on that, we came up with a set of projects, a number of projects that will include city-funded project, or city priority projects, as well as developer-driven projects, grant-funded projects, and a whole range of things that will ultimately implement this plan to, to get to the transportation system envisioned. This draft has been through a fairly extensive public process. I mean, we did draft this during COVID. We tried our best to reach as much of the community as we possibly could. We put stuff on Facebook, we held virtual open houses, we, I stood on the street and tried to talk with folks. We had, we reached out to small groups, special interest groups, we talked a lot with our planning commission and our traffic safety commission about this plan. And based on all of the feedback that we received, this is a plan that's before you tonight. In your staff report for this, you will see sort of the conformance of this plan with other goals of the comprehensive plan, as well as the standards required for this and the Independence Development Code. I will not go into each of those standards, they are in the staff report for your reference, though. Based on all of this, staff has looked at this plan and found it consistent with the City of Independence Comprehensive Plan, the state of Oregon planning goals, this Independence Development Code and all of that stuff. Based on that, we recommend approval of this plan. We did receive just one comment for this public hearing tonight. It was from Michael Duncan. It was in your packet, and it just essentially says that, that he, he was, he was happy to have participated in this process, but just reminding us that they, they don't have any funds programmed right now to help us with any of the projects identified. Now, I'll ask Matt to come up and address any further issues that I may have left out, and answer any questions that you folks might have.
Good evening, and welcome to council.
Sorry about the laptop, I haven't been into my office in quite some time, and I don't have a printer. So I'm all electronic these days. So I see you have the presentation up, up in front, so that's great. So Fred covered a lot of the ground, I'm sorry, Leon should start off by introducing myself. I'm Matt Bell, I'm with Kittleson and Associates. I was the consultant project manager on the project. There were quite a few folks involved, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the larger team, but for Kittleson, it was myself, a woman named Molly McCormick, you may have seen quite a bit of her, for those that participated in some of our meetings, as well as a number of folks back, back at our shop, as well as Angela Planning Group, who was largely in charge of a lot of the code and policy pieces. Do you want to go to the first slide there? So this is a, this is the project schedule that we, that we used to sort of, just, that we kept track of throughout the course of the project. We did kick this project off in January of 2020, like Fred said, right there at the onset of the, a lot of the COVID restrictions coming into place, and worked our way through the project through a very stepwise process, and we're now in the adoption phase. Next slide. So we developed a series of tech memos, just, just like everything Fred was saying there a moment ago. We, we started off with looking at all the existing plans and policies, documents that will really set the, set the framework for how you go about developing a transportation system plan for a community like Independence, and, as well as things like the existing comprehensive plan, the existing transportation system plan, and plans from all the different local agencies. We developed goals and objectives. These, these live in the TSP, as well as, sorry, the Transportation System Plan. They were used to guide the process, as well as develop evaluation criteria used to select and prioritize projects that show up in the plan. We did look at existing traffic conditions, we did a pretty thorough inventory of your transportation system, we looked at existing traffic operations, safety, connectivity, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, fairly comprehensive review of what's out there today. We also looked at future conditions, so we, we looked into our crystal ball and projected out into the future, looked to see what traffic operations were going to look like in the future, and developed a list of needs to accommodate all the growth. We developed alternatives, again, we selected and prioritized those alternatives, and we developed the draft TSP document. So all these are, all these documents are essentially used to, to create the TSP, and they all do still exist on the, the project website that we developed for the project that is still accessible today. Next slide. As I mentioned, there are, there were quite a few people that were involved in this process, so right there at the top is our project management team, consisted of myself, Fred, and the ODA Agency Project Manager, Michael Duncan, as well as a number of other folks that, that helped us just sort of that core process. We also had a couple of advisory committees, a technical advisory committee that consisted of a lot of agent, local agency staff, a project advisory committee that was, was really more made up of local community members. We, again, because of some of the COVID restrictions, we originally had intended to do in-person open houses, but ended up with more of a virtual approach. We held three virtual open houses throughout the course of the project. All three were, were very well, people, lots of participation in all three compared to other similar projects. We also hosted two live events using YouTube. These corresponded with the last two virtual open houses, just to give people that sort of that in-person interaction with the project team. We had a couple of briefings and a couple of work sessions with the planning commission and the city council, and just one more shout-out about the project website. We had a project website that was used to communicate all this information throughout the course of the project. One more thing about the project website is that we, we also use that as an, as an opportunity for people to subscribe, and as part of this process, at least 40 people subscribed to the website, left their, left their names, their email addresses, and asked to be notified whenever anything was updated. That those contact information, that those people's contact information lives in one of our public involvement summary memos that the city has now to hopefully get people more engaged into the future planning.
Did you say 40 people?
Yeah.
Forty? Okay.
Next slide. So this, we, we met with the, our advisory committees, we met with, with the different folks a number of times throughout the course of the project. Each of the advisory committees had four meetings. Again, we had three virtual open houses, we had a couple of meetings with you folks, so this is just sort of keeping track of our, our meetings and milestones. Next slide. And you can just jump on to the next one. So the, the TSP itself is, we, we did our best to try to keep it as concise as we possibly could. TSPs these days are getting shorter and shorter, just trying to stay really focused on what the, the plans and the policies and the projects are that are helping to shape the transportation system. For us, we were really looking at a number of key elements. The, each, each one of these were really presented to us by Tom and others right at the onset of the project, and they, they sort of helped us shape how we, we inventoried and evaluated, and did all of our work throughout the course of the project. So key elements, this is improving east-west, north-south connectivity. I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with your system already, but just limited east-west connectivity really focuses traffic on a, on a few, on a few streets. Improving key connections, this is really referring to some of the intersections throughout the community that have, having some challenges today, or are projected to have challenges in the future. Next, we were really focused on, actually, keep, keep it on that one. Oh, it's okay. We were really, really, this, this plan also really emphasizes bicycle and pedestrian connectivity throughout the community, as well as what we refer to as establishing a low-stress transportation network. These are streets that, that are designed specifically to accommodate people walking, biking, accessing transit facilities, and, and trying to integrate those with traffic. So we're really trying to balance the system to allow for more multimodal traffic throughout the community. Next, we were proving, sorry, providing updated plans and policies, so this is, this is a full update to the transportation, your former transportation system plan. All new projects, all new plans and policies. And then identified potential funding opportunities. As Fred mentioned, there's a, there are a variety of funding opportunities available, and, and despite Michael's comments, one of the things that TSP does do for, does do for the community is, is it sets us up really well to be eligible for funding at the federal, state, and local levels, assuming some of those come to fruition. Next slide. So the, the, kind of the core elements of the TSP, again, are the goals and objectives. There are, there's classic, the classifications and designations of the different roadways. There are roadway intersection and safety improvement projects. There are bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facility and services projects. These are all enhancements to these different systems, just to be consistent with the Oregon transportation planning rules, statewide planning goals. We also look at air, rail, water, and pipeline systems. And then lastly, what we call a transportation system and demand management, these are just ways of keeping the system efficient. And then, again, funding sources. I think there's, yeah, just a couple more slides here, so our, we, we developed two levels of plans. We, we have a cost-constrained plan, which are the, the projects that we would hope to have funded throughout, over the next 20-year period, and then the larger preferred plan, which is, which is a much longer list of projects, much, much bigger number there. So you can, I, I can't see that far, but you can see the, see the dollar amounts there, and, and the map there is showing where those cost-constrained projects are. Next slide. This is the overall, this is the overall, like, the, again, the preferred plan, the total cost of the overall plan. We, we did break things in the high, medium, and low, low priority. Doesn't necessarily mean that any one of these projects that are in the medium or the low priority couldn't be elevated, just based on community feedback, based on opportunities. Next slide. Lastly, there were, there were just a small number of amendments that have come along with the TSP. These are the comprehensive plan amendments, just really replacing the existing policies and referring to the TSP and the comprehensive plan, ensuring existing relevant compliance policies are addressed throughout the TSP. Lastly, there is a list of development code amendments. Most of these are fairly minor, and are some of the things that, that are really sort of specific and unique to Independence, just are listed there, and really have to do with the locations of fences and frontages and different improvements that are allowed at a residential level. Next slide. That's, that's my last slide, and I have the TSP with me, I have all of our prior, prior tech memos with me, and available to answer any questions you have.
Questions for the speaker, Councilor Corv.
I mentioned this the last time you made a presentation, I believe I emailed it to Fred and talked to Tom about it yesterday. The signal at Gun Club Road and Hoffman was an unfunded portion of the Safe for Us to School grant. Since then, Monmouth has started a 62-unit development between Gun Club Road and 99. It's going to cause an enormous amount of traffic up and down Hoffman Road. My concerns are the impact to bikes and pedestrians, but also whether or not you can turn in a reasonable timeframe. I know there may be reasons why you don't include this in the plan, but I would like it to be more than a sticky note on the plan, if there's any way we can footnote that. I know, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, the grantor encourages the city to reapply for that signal with grant funds, so obviously, it's something we want to pursue, but.
Yeah, that was, that was a Safe for Us to School application that the cities of Independence, Monmouth, and Polk County all made collaboratively. And, yeah, they did recommend that we come back for the next round of funding for that. So you're specifically talking about a signal at that location, and Matt can talk about, you know, the technical warrants for it, but just because it may or may not be warrants, if there's a genuine safety issue from, you know, from a pedestrian, we can still pursue those things, that doesn't preclude us from doing that in that particular area, so we would continue to do that.
Tom, can I, I have a question. I'm working on that development, the Monmouth development, Hoffman Meadows, Hoffman Estates. Is that something I need to disclose? I didn't really, it was part of.
You know, this is a general plan for the city at a very high level, so, you know, you wouldn't have any issues, it's not be, there's nothing in this plan that would benefit one project over another, there's.
Okay.
There's dozens and dozens. But it's good that you.
Just want to say that, that some of those people are coming.
Just to make sure that you.
Okay.
Have identified.
Encourage them to go left instead of right.
Councilor Martin.
I just have a couple of small questions, and they're in part incidental, but I read a couple of places in here about Ash Creek Trail, and that has a long history here. Are we actually going to end up with a marked Ash Creek Trail? And I presume part of it will be on city streets.
I, I, I am familiar with a little bit of the history of the Ash Creek Trail. It is, it is included in the plan, because it's, I think it's been something that's been on the. the books for a while and something that the community continued to support. And as far as the exact alignment of the trail goes, whether it's completely off-street or, like you say, partially on-street, those types of details weren't necessarily included in this plan. It would be something that is, I know that the Ash Creek Trail plan itself has quite a bit more detail.
I just noticed that, for the most part, it followed along with city streets. Okay, my other question is concerning, it just came up today because I happened to reread some things in the paper about our sister city approving e-scooters. And I could not tell from the reporting that was done whether that was for sidewalk, city, or bike trail use, or bike lane use. And I do see that scooter is included in here. Would that be motorized scooters?
Yes, if we were referring to e-scooters, then, yes. As far as the, as far as the, I think, as far as the TSP goes, with regard to e-scooters, down in our emerging technologies section of the report, it probably, I could scroll down there and tell you, but what I remember is that it more refers to what the city needs to do to be prepared for those types of services to come in place. And one of those things is likely going to be establishing policies about where folks can ride.
Okay.
Most of the cities I've seen, they ride in the bike lanes. I would hope that's where they are.
Counselor Roden.
You said, I liked how you talked about a crystal ball into the future. Is there a way, is there something in this plan, on what pages in this plan, that we can see where future developments have to plan for traffic and parking and those types of things before they're built?
I don't know that that necessarily would exist in the TSP. That's more of something that would be in the development code.
So we don't have to plan for traffic. See, that's the problem that we have now, is that we didn't plan for traffic. So we're developing this code, and we're still not addressing the fact that we're not planning for future traffic. So there is no point to look in your crystal ball if we're not going to use that information. Here's the second one. Is this plan...
I think Fred's trying to get in here.
So I just wanted, just to clarify just real quick. So Matt was talking about specifically parking and stuff as part of all future development. So Matt's crystal ball looks like this. It's called a traffic model. It assigns development, it looks at our zoning, and it assigns development in various zones called traffic analysis zones, or what, traffic analysis zones. It then allocates it to certain roads. So he did consider future development in the allocation to the roads and where that traffic would go. I think what Matt was responding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, was specifically related to the parking in developments, which is handled in our development code. He didn't get down to, like, assigning how parking would happen in developments. He just essentially took our zoning and said, "We're expecting X number of houses here. Those X houses will produce Y number of trips, and those Y number of trips will be distributed in this way throughout the transportation."
So how does this transportation system plan protect, like, the end of 7th Street? How do we do it so that the end of 7th Street still only has one entrance and exit? How does this plan prevent that from happening again in the future?
So Fred was pretty close to what I was, the way that I was responding, I think, I was thinking you were asking me was, does this plan include provisions related to, like, a traffic impact analysis for a private development project? And those requirements, I believe, largely exist in the development code. So this plan does account for, does account for growth. So all the, the future traffic volumes on long roadways at intersections are accounted for in this plan. But you will still need a traffic impact analysis to evaluate the specific impacts of different developments. We don't capture everything. And this would kind of be, to respond to your question about, like, Gun Club Road, for example, we looked at the weekday evening peak time period, really representative of one day of data for a very large plan. And certainly, whenever people are seeing challenges out there on Gun Club Road and Hoffman, it's probably related to school traffic, or potentially in the morning peak hour, so it doesn't capture that. So that's really the job of a lot of the traffic impact analyses, to make sure that the system is going to continue to operate.
It's just frustrating that we're not fixing the problems still that we have in Independence. My next question is, is this policy set in stone?
Which policy?
This whole traffic safety plan. Is this, like, for example, page 74. On page 74, it has a map that shows freight and farm equipment routes. Is that something that's now, if we accept this plan, this is how traffic for farm equipment has to get around in our city?
So the freight and farm equipment routes was something that came from a number of different folks that had expressed an interest in being able to identify what the preferred routes were through town, so that we could sort of build the transportation system around the idea that we don't want trucks trying to go up and down Stryker, we don't want people avoiding Stryker, or we don't want people to try to avoid the intersection of, like, of Polk and Main Street. So we want to route the trucks. We don't want trucks to go through downtown. Like, today, a lot of truck traffic in downtown is managed through more passive treatments like the, sort of the narrowing of the roadways, the curb extensions at the Main and Monmouth intersection, those types of things to discourage trucks' traffic from coming through downtown.
But we're not going to, like, right now, currently, we're harvesting mint in our communities, and so mint goes from one side of our community to another side. It's a truck that is, takes up one lane of the road, doesn't have to take up two lanes of the road, but we're now going to tell them they have to divert all the way around town to get to their fields on the other side. Is that what this plan is making us do?
I think that the identification of, like, 16th Avenue, for example, as a freight and farm equipment route is, was something that came from our advisory committees, that this is a route that's largely being used today, and just wanted to codify that.
But are, so you're saying that farm equipment cannot go through downtown Independence if we accept this plan?
So if I can jump in here, maybe out of a little clarity. So this is a transportation system plan, it's a 20-year plan, and it's looking at a very, very high level of opportunities that can be taken and things that we can do to alleviate the stuff that you're talking about on 7th Street. So if you look through the plan, you'll see that it is considering alternate connectivity routes to make sure as things develop that we are trying to, you know, avoid those situations in the future. But if you take a look at what's on page 74 and say, "If we adopt this plan, do all of a sudden mint trucks need to follow this route?", the answer is no. This plan is a transportation system plan, it's a very high level. If we actually wanted to get down to defining what that route was going to be enforcing, that would have to come back to council. That's not an administrative decision or a policy decisions that's in here. This is just a recommendation about the best way to go about it at some point in the future over the life of this period, but it is not us going up and putting it aside by you adopting this. That would actually be some sort of council action that you would need to take at some date, and we don't plan on bringing that back to you anytime in the near future.
Okay, because that's what I was concerned about, is if we vote, if I or anybody votes yes on this today, are we hold, held to make sure this happens? Because the same thing, I have a question on page 93 with the bike lanes. It seems like a great idea to put, what, does it say eight feet of buffer on each side of Main Street? But how do we do that without removing sidewalks? I mean, how do we do that? So, I mean, it's just like, great ideas, so these are just a bunch of ideas that we're going to take up in the future, but none of this is set in stone. Okay.
I think you actually...
It's a guidance tool.
And I think you actually take people's property, right? You would take some of their yard in order to widen these streets. I mean, there's nowhere else to widen, right? So do you take people's yards?
Ideally, the way that we had set up the cross-sections was really intended to not move the curbs specifically along Monmouth, east of Ash Creek, and along Main Street, basically between, like, B Street all the way down to about F Street. So the cross-sections are intended to be set up so that you wouldn't be moving curbs, you wouldn't be taking any property there.
This indicates here that, I mean, just part of it is on Main Street. And if you look at Main Street in Independence and you take eight feet on either side to have a bike lane on either side of eight feet, you're left with one lane of traffic.
Yeah, we do provide ranges, ranges for the widths of available for bicycles. So it's not necessarily eight feet. It does get down there a little bit. And there is also provisions in there to allow for shared space between the vehicles and the bikes.
I love all these dreams that we make that we really can't ever put into reality.
Additional questions, Counselor Core?
I think it's safe to say you and Fred didn't dream this up in a closet. I mean, you took input from the community, these are things the community wants. I hear all the time people are upset about trucks driving down Main Street. You have to stop your conversation, you know, haze flying all over the place this time of the year. It's just not something a lot of people can support. I understand they got to get their stuff to market, I get the whole deal. So I understand that you want to create alternate routes that would possibly be better for them, too. We do get a lot of wide loads coming down Main Street, you know? We do get the big, I don't know what you call them, not a farm person, but those big honking things that you can almost drive under, and they take up almost a half, one and a half lanes. So they need a better place to drive. They need a better place to get through the city.
I'd just like to remind the council that we are an agricultural community.
But let's make sure we're asking questions of the staff people, and then we can get into a discussion in the future at our next step. Let's just, go ahead.
I had, just had a question, the cost. The proposed plan proposes projects that cost approximately 64.7 million and high-priority projects that total approximately 18.3 million. Are you saying the total is going to be 83 million if you were to do the high priority and the other, or is it this 64.7?
The total cost is 64.7.
That's 64.7 as a total.
Over 20 years.
Yes, over 20 years.
With grants.
Right.
Lots of grants.
With lots of grants.
And does that...
And state and federal funding.
Go ahead.
The transportation part of it, I mean, I saw a lot of stuff in here that was neat about, you know, bikes and pedestrians and encouraging people to basically do something other than drive, which, you know, I have my opinion about that if you really can actually get people to do it. We have beautiful trails, and they're not crowded down there. I mean, there's lots of places for people to bike and walk, and it's just not, you can't get them there, except for maybe three months of the year, you know, it's more populated. So does this include, like, fixing all the potholes on the streets and stuff, like repaving things? Because that's my big concern, is potholes everywhere, and we're talking about transportation and bicyclists and pedestrians and the roads we have.
So generally, speaking, no, some of our cost estimates do include, whenever we need to widen the roadway or reconstruct the roadway, some of our cost estimates would include sort of an overlay in some cases, but in general, maintenance isn't addressed in the plan.
Mr. Passamere, I think you wanted to get in here.
Yeah, because I think that's a great question, and I alluded to it earlier, but let me go into a little bit more depth. As with all master plans or system plans that we do, the very next step that we do is we actually go into a detailed financial analysis to figure out, how do we do the operational type of things or maintenance of roads? And then how do we assign appropriately the cost to the growth or the development community? So that breaks it down into system development charges for growth or for development activities, and then fees related to operations and maintenance. Now, we get gas tax, we get certain revenues in from the state, but we all know that those aren't enough to actually do things. So one of the things that you guys approved in the budget, we talked about when we were going through the capital improvement plan, was putting money into hiring a consultant to come in, take this work, and then really refine it and say, "Okay, well, what is the development community's responsibility? What are the maintenance plans that we're talking about doing? We need to do for our pavement management plan?" And then how do we put those all together? So that will be another process, which is actually something that transportation system plan consultants don't really necessarily get into the details of. If they do, they usually are hiring someone. So we just do that as a separate process. And we will get down very deep into the weeds on all the costs of what you're talking about for maintenance-type of issues and how we can pay for those, as well as the growth-related issues that are identified in this plan, so that we can assign things fairly to the development community, but also make sure that they're paying their way as they grow, that they aren't creating a burden on the taxpayers for the City of Independence. And that goes for the transportation plan. We're also finishing up our supermaster plan, and we'll do that for the supermaster plan as well. So we'll probably combine those efforts, but we'll definitely be doing some very detailed information based on this work. This is kind of the high-level plan, then we get down into the weeds and we figure out how we're going to pay for it all.
Mr. Passamere, I'm going to ask a follow-up question, I think because some people have the questions, because I know, because I get it all the time about driving down Monmouth Street or up on Highway 51, potholes and things like that. Who owns that and who is responsible for that?
Well, 51, Highway 51, so if you're coming down Main Street all the way to Monmouth Street, so if you're coming from the north-south, that is owned by ODOT. So ODOT is responsible for the maintenance of that. Past Monmouth Street on Main Street is our responsibility. So as you know, we are going to be investing in a project out here in order to take care of some of those issues. And so we have some state sources for that money, as well as some of our revenues that we brought in over time. If you go up Monmouth Street, that again is Highway 51, and again, that is ODOT's responsibility.
And ODOT is not doing that because our sidewalks are not compliant with ADA? Or what is the reasoning that ODOT doesn't?
So two different things. So ODOT just did a project to improve some of the sidewalks on Monmouth Street in order to make them more ADA compliant. But as far as the pavement management goes, yeah, that's their responsibility to take care of over time, and typically they will do spot repairs until it gets to a point, and then they'll do a grind every day, so.
So if somebody puts an issue in Indy Works about a pothole on 51, does that do any good? Do you refer that to ODOT, or...
Oh, yeah. Everything that goes into Indy Works gets responded to.
Well, I just thought, if it's not our responsibility, you know, are we wasting our time by putting it in there?
We're happy to pass things on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to keep us focused here. Are there...
I have one follow-up comment regarding...
Go ahead, a comment or question.
A comment, just historically, dealing with the agricultural equipment that comes into town. I've known maybe a half dozen times in the last 10 years when the traffic has been diverted because there is an event going on downtown, and it's nice to see now that there's going to be a standardized route for diverting it, because then it doesn't become a, you know, "I'm two blocks off Main Street, now what?"
So this is a standardized plan. This is going to be the plan for where we put farm equipment?
It's a visioning tool.
And as I was saying, I don't...
That's what I understand.
...passing anything in stone. It gives us a visioning reference provided by the community...
So if I don't...
...on which we can make future decisions.
So just to teach me a little bit.
I'm going to hold the discussion here for me, because I want to finish one hunk at a time, and not ignoring your question. Are there other questions for staff in front of us right now?
One super quick, I hope, easy question. It looks like maybe the pedestrian bridge at East Street across the creek went away?
No, it's in there.
Okay, and there is something in there specifically stating now, because there was a lot of back and forth with members of the community, that that will, we are not going to do a redundancy and have any kind of auto traffic across that bridge, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just need that for the record.
Last call for questions from the staff people.
I think it's key 41.
At this point.
Thank you.
Okay, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing, because I don't see anybody else jumping up and have anything to say. Okay, I'm now officially closing the public hearing. So now what we're going to do is we're going to move on to amending the Independence Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, adopting the transportation system plan. Fred, did you want to make any preparatory comments? And then we can have the discussions that some people wanted to have.
Yeah, so there are some, so as part of this, there are some changes that we needed to make to make sure that we're consistent with the transportation system planning rule. Those absolute necessary ones included, like, connectivity and parking lots. We didn't have the connectivity standard in our code, and so they looked through that and they recommended that we made that change. Matt had a slide that showed all of those changes. Some of those were not required by the state, and as a result, we want to have more sort of conversation with our planning commission and you folks before we go forward. forward with those changes. The, the basic changes were, um, things like consolidating permit review, making sure that we allow transportation as a permitted use in all zones, which seems kind of crazy, but, um, so those are the changes that are in the, the code. Uh, that's before you, also, um, the, the change to the comprehensive plan is really simple, it just essentially updates the date, uh, because we adopt our transporta- we currently adopt the two thousand and seven Transportation System Plan by reference, and that's just, uh, simply adopt, uh, changing the reference. So, that's what those changes represent.
Okay, before we get into the, uh, the session, I wanted to follow up on your question, Councilor.
Yes.
As, as I see this, and I've seen this, uh, before, when you're, uh, talking about the agricultural part, I, it's not a preclusion, it's that the, um, there is a suggested route that is easier, that you can make so that it's an easier route to go this way, doesn't mean you can't go that way, but you could go that way because it's gonna be easier, and frequently, in my experience, I've seen that, that those, that's where you can have softened corners. So it doesn't mean you can't go through, but if the softened corners on a preferred route make it easier for people, but does not require, is that a fair characterization, Fred or Jen, or Tom?
Here's my thing, too, is this, you just think that agriculture community would know which route would be easier for them to do. And so my thing is, and that's why I was asking, um, you, Kathy, is, um, is agreeing, agreeing to this plan when I don't feel that our community would agree with big points of it, does that put me in a situation where I am agreeing to, am I now accepting the way things are? Because like, twenty minutes ago, I asked about the rerouting and you guys said it was, you know, something to look at in the future and dig in deep, dive into the weeds at a future point. And then Counselor Mortensen said it's, you know, it's great to have that standard plan for people to drive around. I, I just-
So I'm gonna go to Mr. Pesamir?
Yeah, again, it, it's a plan. Um, you know, if, if we were going to implement something like that, you first off would need to define what is an agricultural vehicle. What, you, you would have to put code together to say, okay, what it is. And, and you know, the reality is, is agricultural equipment keeps getting bigger and bigger, and it may get to the point where there's something that's so big that you really want them to follow that route. So then you would come up with the definition of the agricultural vehicle in Independence for what that was, and say, if you meet these criteria, then you would need to do that. It may be what's suggested in the plan, it might be something different, but by just agreeing to this plan, we aren't committing to changing anything about the way agricultural vehicles are operating today, other than, you know, like the mayor said, is, hey, you know, um, maybe we should, uh, think about that for the future as we develop corners, making sure that the corners are big enough so that if that ever does happen, that we can accommodate, um, that change in the future.
So Fred, you keep laughing at me, but I'm gonna ask this. What part of this plan is, what percentage of this plan are those mandatory changes that you said that were required by the state, and what, how much of this plan is stuff that you just put in because you would like to see the community do this in the future? Which part is mandatory?
Uh, so I was speaking specifically about the code changes that are before you right now. There was a certain number of code changes that required things like connectivity and parking lots for certain sizes of developments. That's in our code and not, not in the plan. The, the, the plan is based on a, I mean, the, the TSP is based on a state framework. Um, it tells, tells us that we should look at various modes, and we looked at those modes and we used the process that we identified to identify the, uh, that I talked about, to identify the projects that, that we came up with, the project list. That's essentially how a TSP works. In terms of the mandatory stuff that's specifically related to the code, and I apologize if I didn't make that clear, as for, um, why I'm sort of snickering over here, is because I was standing out on, um, on Main Street, and I'm like, hey, uh, you know, I'm trying to, you know, I'm being a hawker or whatever, "Hey, come talk to me about the transportation system plan," you know, s- one, and there's an old-time farmer that walks by, you're like, "Transportation," you know, he just busting my chops, like, "You should have connected the bridge over here across, I, what were you guys thinking?" You know, all this sort of stuff. Well, anyways, I'm like, okay, you're a farmer, let me ask you about trans-, uh, a farm equipment route, where would you go? And he says, "I would take Sixteenth." You don't need a consultant to tell you that. And so, I mean, that's not why this was in here, but hearing from him that, it completely confirmed to, to me like, oh, maybe that idea has some merit. And I mean, and frankly, like Tom's saying, some farm equipment is big. Where are they, you know, I've seen people have to pull over to both sides of the road to get a farm equipment through. If there is an alternative route, like, uh, letting people know is not a bad idea. So that's, um, that's essentially why that's in here. Um, so anyways, I wasn't, I was just laughing, cause I always remember that, so.
Thank you. Okay, this is an action item, and we, it's, it's an ordinance, and if people would like to suggest action, we could move forward.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CB twenty-two-one dash zero-seven as submitted.
Second?
Hold on, I need to get mine.
Did I read that right?
No, 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 because that, that's gonna be on page forty, we have to do the ordinances, the, uh, the one, two, three motions?
Do over.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Core, I, I, I understand.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill twenty-two-one dash oh-seven in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Martin Willis. Is there a discussion about this motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
I oppose.
Okay, I have, uh, Counselor Joe, opposed.
I'll oppose with it.
And so did Counselor Roden. Okay, so what, uh, we're going to do, Karen and I are correct, since we have opposition, this forces it to carry to the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I need to read the title right now.
Thank you.
The ordinance amending the Independence Comprehensive Plan and Development Code adopting the Transportation, Transportation System Plan.
Okay, since we did not have unanimity on that, we will bring this up at the next, uh, council meeting for, uh, vote and final decision. Okay? Great. Let's move forward to the next item on our agenda. Uh, Mr. Pesamir, oh, Mr. Evander, I think you have, uh, a request for a, for us to go forward for a grant request, a request to go forward for a grant request. That's, all right, English was not, Mr. Evander, go ahead.
Perfect. So, um, so what this is in front of you is, because we had such fun with this, uh, last TGM grant, uh, we would like to apply for another one. Basically, uh, recognizing the Vision twenty-fourty plan, which identifies, uh, purification of Monmouth Street and sort of redevelopment around Central Plaza, recognizing some of the stuff that, um, we have proposed in the Independence Transportation System Plan, uh, things like an alternative modes Main Street, uh, sort of along East Street to, to sort of function as, um, at, uh, uh, we would like to apply for a grant to sort of look at the area around Central Plaza, uh, a little bit more. Basically, one of the compelling things about this project to me is years and years and years ago, uh, City of Independence, City of Monmouth, they put in a railroad, right? That railroad connected downtown Independence and downtown Monmouth. Um, as a result of that railroad, a little community called Talmage, uh, sort of grew up, and this would enable us to sort of look at that same rail line and conduct a sim-, uh, consider similar transportation investments to, like, a hundred years later, promote the growth of that same area. I think that that's, makes a, 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 a kind of compelling project, and it would, it would enable us to sort of, um, consider, um, how we could take this central Talmage area and really make it into more of a center of our community. Um, that's what this grant would do. Um, this resolution before you would essentially, um, uh, uh, give your blessing to submit that application to see if we could actually, um, get a grant to pursue that project.
Questions, Counselor Martin Willis?
Um, so just, uh, really quickly, um, on the parameters on the, the TGM grant, is there typically a required match on that?
There is, yep. The, the request is, uh, we're going to be asking for a, a, a hundred thousand dollars, it's a twelve percent match, and twelve thousand dollars worth of staff time, yep, would be, would be associated with that.
Thank you.
There's some questions. So I have a question, so this, this isn't just necessarily transportation, but it's kind of like, you know, just kind of revisioning the area a little bit and maybe updating the area a little bit?
Right, yeah, it's, that, thank you very much, because I didn't say, I, I didn't say it very well, but, I mean, when, when you look at a map, and I look at a lot of maps, when you look at undeveloped land in the City of Independence, basically the only undeveloped commercial land that we have in the community is around Central Plaza. Why isn't it developed? Because there's no good transportation back there. So it seems to me that this would be a great opportunity to take something like that East Street corridor to, to, to make it very pedestrian-friendly and then ultimately encourage development back there in a very walkable pedestrian-oriented form that could really enliven that whole area. Um, so-
Where are you looking at again? I'm trying to envision it.
Um, so, um, um, so Central Plaza, if you look like behind the Calvary Chapel, there's a vacant parcel back there. If you look behind First Baptist, there's a big chunk of land back there. If you look behind the, the, uh, memory care place, there's a bunch of land back there. And just south of that East Street, there's some large multifamily zoned pieces, um, back there as well. So this would give us a chance to sort of go into that site to conceptualize, how, how might, uh, we implement this vision that we identified in the twenty-fourty plan to make sort of the Central Plaza area, uh, really pop? So.
Counselor Martin?
We do have two separate commercial areas in Independence, and that's always been kind of the unmined gem down there, and it's perfect timing for this since the plaza itself has just sold, and the new owners have a much different vision for how that should be, um, configured than the previous owners did. And I like some of the things that I've heard and I definitely support this.
Is this just for, um, commercial use?
No.
Could this, could this money be, could we use this grant for sports park development?
No.
It has to be used for?
This is, this is, the, the grant would be through the depart-, uh, the, uh, the TGM, the Transportation and Growth Management Program. So it's a specific targeted grant to look at things like, uh, community vitality, transportation, that sort of stuff, uh.
And this is fairly area-specific, too, isn't it?
This would be very area-specific, really doing, uh, sort of trying to flesh out some of these ideas that have been articulated through some of these recent plans.
Great.
And this is also about Talmage Middle School and Central High School, right?
No, it's-
So I, it's, cause it's in there, so I didn't know.
Yeah, it's not, it's not about Talm-, it's funny because, you know, I, when we're thinking of what to call it, we couldn't, we couldn't come up with a name. And then when we realized the, the historic land use connection associated with the community of Talmage, we thought, psh, let's call it the Central Talmage Area, let's make Talmage-
Well, it says and Central High School.
Yeah, well, Talm-, Central High School is right.
That is about, okay.
Is, is in that area. So it, it seemed like it was a, I, I don't know, to me, maybe it doesn't make sense, but I thought, hey, we could do the Central Talmage Area and we could-
And it also says, it also says and Talmage Middle School.
Right.
So, so we are talking about the schools and, and the transportation around them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep. You can.
And also, just from a historic viewpoint, Talmage was centered where, um, the hardware store is now on Sixteenth, because that's where the big racetrack was.
Yeah.
So we also got our historic piece of information this evening?
Yes.
Okay, this is an action item, if someone would like to suggest action on this, I would appreciate it.
I would. I move to approve Resolution twelve dash one-five-five-six, a resolution authorizing city staff to apply for a grant from the State Transportation and Growth Management Program.
Second?
I have a motion, second by Counselor Core, is there further discussion? Hearing, no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Pesamir, I think you have the next item on the agenda this evening?
Uh, so yes, it's, uh, not on the, uh, printed agenda, but this is the last minute item that came up, and so, um, just kind of a, a couple of things. You have, uh, the documents before you. Um, we have seen, um, the hotel as it really, uh, goes through recovery process and figure out exactly where it is best suited, um, to, uh, serve, uh, the community and, and people who want to, uh, do tourism in Independence. Um, they have found that weddings are a big, um, business for them, and so they, uh, certainly support that. Um, and as we have seen, um, there are some weddings that are, are smaller, uh, size that actually wanna use the park, um, as a place for wedding. We had one not too long ago, um, they came in with, for an alcohol application, um, cause we have code that requires, uh, uh, any alcohol approvals, uh, in the park or approv-, approved by city council. Um, and so that, uh, came to you, it was approved. Uh, we got this, uh, application very recently, um, with a wedding that's happening very soon before our council would, would meet again. And so, um, in, in respect to just trying to make things happen, we figured that we would bring it before you. Um, the second, second topic, which we can talk about after you do this, is, uh, do we wanna make a minor change to not make these things come before council? Many cities have their city manager, um, approve simple, um, alcohol permit applications and then report back to council. Um, so, why, why don't we deal with the issue before us first and then maybe we can have just a brief conversation if that's something you guys are interested in?
So counselors, I think you all got the, uh, the addendum, are, do you have que- it, it looks pretty straightforward to me. Uh, are there any addition, any questions for Mr. Pesamir at this point?
I did have a question before we vote on this. Um, is this something that is just for weddings to have the alcohol in the park, or could you have a reunion or, I mean, is that, so pretty much any birthday, you could have whatever you want in the park and you can rent, um, rent it out, I guess, and then have alcohol and a dance floor?
Yeah, as long as you met the criteria and, and right now it came before council got approval and make sure that you have the all the OLCC permits and people are being served and everything else. And it runs through the police department, too, to make sure that they're, whoever's supplying is, is meeting, um, all the OLCC requirements and everything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Core?
When you have a concession in the park like this, how do you ensure that the servers aren't serving somebody who's not part of the wedding?
Um-
I hesitate to say the word wristband, but I'll say it, but-
Do you have an answer?
How do you know who's in the, who's in the wedding party?
No, it's the, it's the job of the people that have-
The servers?
Yeah.
Okay.
The police that are involved.
Okay.
Sound okay? Okay, um, we have to take action on this, so if someone would suggest, would make the motion, I'd appreciate that.
I move to allow a temporary use of alcohol for a private event, Mick Callum wedding in the area of River View Park as designed in their, is designated in their application.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second by, by, uh, Martin Willis. Uh, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Uh, so counselors, um, would anybody object to staff bringing forward, uh, whatever we need to do to approve, to allow, uh, things like this to be decided at the staff level? Do people-
Does it include businesses that are applying for OLCC licenses, or we still see those?
Um, you know, that is up to council. Uh, I would, at this point, we kinda had that conversation about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, and council said they still wanted to see those, so I would assume that those would come back. I'm talking about probably these really simple one-day type, uh, event kind of things. Um, I'm not sure that, that you guys won't see that all, but if you do, that's perfectly fine, it's up to you.
I would vote to let the staff take care of all the OLCC stuff.
So let's do this, unless there's objection, let's let staff figure out what makes sense and then bring that to us. Does that seem okay?
I, I would like to know what is happening, um, not necessarily voting like this, you know, but just like a memo that says this is- but just like a memo that says this is happening, yeah.
Yeah.
I might want to go.
And typically, the way most managers handle this is anytime they approve one, they either report out at the next council meeting if it's timely, or they'll send an email to council just letting them know. Because it is important that, you know.
So we'll let you folks bring some things to us and we'll go from there. And that was the first thing I thought of, it's been noodling around on this. Okay, announcements.
I have an announcement. I just would like to acknowledge the Central Junior Federal Division of Baseball just won their state championships. It's a pretty amazing event. They worked really hard all season. They went up to Portland and they dominated, and I'm just so excited for Central and their team. I'd also like to congratulate Dallas, even though that's not us. But Dallas Nationals took state as well in their division, and that's pretty impressive that our community is so into baseball. And I'd like to congratulate the Central National Team who took fourth place in state.
All right, good.
Great. Additional announcements? Okay, somebody send us home.
Move to a, move to a, move to a turn.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Yes? Any objection? We're done. Thank you very much.